No.
It's not on the agenda.
If everybody will have a seat, please, we need to start the meeting. And I call this meeting to order. If you'll please rise and we'll have the invocation by Supervisor Watson and then Supervisor Moss will lead us in the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask that you continue to keep our nation under your care and provide a clear vision of our will to our leaders. We also pray for the speedy recovery of Supervisor Joy Brotherton. Please guide us as we consider the merits of each item that is placed before us. We pray for peace within ourselves and throughout the world. Amen.
Please show me the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Peggy, do we have Supervisor Johnson on the phone?
Supervisor Johnson, are you online?
Yes.
Okay.
Boy, does he sound enthusiastic this morning.
Okay, I need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on May 5, 2014 at 9:00 AM for discussion and consultation with legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03.
So moved.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do we have any committee and/or legislative reports this morning? Supervisor Watson?
I have none this morning.
Supervisor Moss?
I have none.
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do. The National Association of Counties held their second annual cyber symposium that focused on how counties should prepare to combat cyber threats and what resources are available to resist them. During the symposium, two tabletop exercises were performed that simulated real-life cyber attacks regarding data breaches and infrastructure attacks. During the simulations, participants were asked to imagine a scenario in which a cyber criminal had hacked into a county's network of data and held it for ransom, which hit real close home for us. In order to help counties prepare for such attacks, there needs to be a plan of action put into place. Ralph Johnson, the Chief Information, Security, and Privacy Office for King County, Washington, noted that a number-one reason for cyber breaches is usually due to negligence. He recommended that implementing cyber training for employees would help to reduce this and that by putting into place an emergency response plan regarding cyber attacks a county will prepare when this happens. The second tabletop exercise dealt with public utility companies being attacked, resulting in not only electricity going out for county residents but also cutting off access to the water supply. When one thinks of public utilities, they normally don't associate cyber attacks with them. However, they are not exempt from these types of attacks. With everything connected to the Internet today, one could easily hack into our utility companies and turn off power for millions of Americans. During the symposium, many other elected officials from around the country stated that justifying the amount of money needed to be spent on cybersecurity and training was very difficult. When it comes to funding for cybersecurity, you cannot base it on what is going to occur but on what might occur. Andrew Dolan, who's the Director of Government Affairs for the Multi-State Information, Sherry and Analysis Center, mentioned that there are over 3 billion Internet users in the United States. Dolan commented that it wasn't about how to prevent an attack as much as how to deal with it. It's almost inevitable that you will become a victim of cyber attack at some point during your life. That's all, Madam.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, moving on, I need a, well, do we have a county administrator's report?
Madam Chairman, I don't have a report today, thank you.
Very good. Motion to approve the minutes of the February 13, 2014 Board of Supervisors meeting.
So moved.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm going to open the call to public. Those wishing to address the board at the call to public regarding matters not on the board agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk a call to the public request-to-speak form located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of the consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. No one has signed up, but there's quite a crowd, so is there anybody who would like to speak at the call to public? Seeing none, I will close the call to public. Next up, we have several presentations, and on your agenda, if you'll notice, there's a presentation of 2013 Service Awards, and I'd like to move that, with no objection, to be the first presentation, because there's a lot of people here who I know are itching to get that done and maybe get back to work, so if everything's okay, I'd like to do that. So I'll call Ken Cunningham up.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mojave County officially recognizes employees' years of service through the Service Award Program. The following service awards are for the year ending December 31, 2013. This year, we had 123 service awards for five, 10, 15, 20, 25, and 35 years of service. This morning, we'll present those service awards to those employees with 15, 20, 25, and 35 years of continuous service to Mojave County. The Board of Supervisors and Mojave County management would like to congratulate all of our dedicated employees receiving an award. For those employees that were able to attend the presentation, please wait until your name is called and then come forward to receive your award, and then if you'd please exit towards the rock wall and shake hands with the Board of Supervisors, please. And then, if you would wait, we'll have a group picture at the end of the presentation. For 15 years of service, Colin Patelio? Patelio? Congratulations. Shannon Summers? Congratulations. Nathan McDaniel? Carmen Acosta? Shailene Reed? Cynthia Tank? Sean Blackburn? Brian Bridges? Melinda Kemp? Janice Gardam? For 20 years of service, Ken Fielder? Ron Nicholson? Doris Yellowhair? Christine Ballard? Lisa Hatchell? Warren Twitchell? For 25 years of service, Melody Jensen? Sonia Hamillo? Robert Ballard? For 35 years of service, Dorothy Hatton? There's one more award we'd like to announce. This gentleman just completed 20 years of service and then he passed away this year. I'd like to mention Ron Weaver, special recognition for his 20 years of service.
For those of you who didn't know him, Ron Weaver worked for this county for 20 years in parks, and he loved his job, and he did a great job, and he was always honored, and I only met him a few times. Unfortunately, he passed away on December 5, 2013, and his wife, Mary, asked me to accept his award, and I do so with honor, so thank you very much.
If you put them all together, it's going to look like a big block. I'd put them up here. That way we can get the seal in the background.
Fill it in on this side, because I can get the seal in the center.
Ron, bring your crew over here. Kind of keep shifting. Phil, you stay where you are. These three over here, please come over there.
And I see a big hole in the center. Here you go.
Okay, everybody smile. Keep your eyes open.
You're all so handsome. Thank you.
Okay, while people are scuttling around, I see we have the presentation by, it's a status update by John Flynn. He's the administrator of the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District, and I believe they're setting up right now.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board. John Flynn, Administrator for the Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District, requested to come and make a presentation this morning in regards to the status of the district, and with me is Chief Pat Moore, who I'm sure you all know, and happy to appear here again this morning before the Board of Supervisors. And so this morning, I'm just going to give you a little background of where we were, where we are now, and kind of where we're going to be here in the future. So, just as a background, started February 6, 2013, appointed by the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to manage the district. We're 439 days into this project to date. The Lake Mojave Rancho's Fire District was financially insolvent, and we implemented a plan to mitigate the financial insolvency pursuant to ARS 1125159. The financial workout plan was implemented in conjunction with the Treasurer's Office, the Mojave County Finance Office and staff, and so just as a little background, on February 6, 2013, we had employees there 30 days without pay and benefits. We had payables due of $146,000, included the back pay. We had a revolving line of credit balance of $437,000 owed to Wells Fargo, and we had some other long-term obligations at the district of approximately $97,657. We immediately implemented a recovery plan. Since we started in February, we only had a few months left in that fiscal year, but we reduced staffing, we eliminated a number of full-time employment positions. Fortunately, the delivery of fire and emergency medical services is very labor-intensive, and so that's where a majority of the money goes, and so we were forced to eliminate some positions. All nonessential expenditures were curtailed. We sold a number of assets that the district had in that process, some surplus fire equipment, surplus ambulances. We sold some vehicles that we had on lease purchase, which was part of that long-term debt, so that we could get some finances back to the district and continue to deliver services. Service delivery outside of the jurisdictional boundaries was curtailed. I don't know if you're familiar with the district, but the district is 60, 70 square miles, but the CON, the Certificate of Necessity for the Ambulance Services, 1,000 square miles, and so we still operate the ambulance out in those areas when we need to, but any fire services that we do are structured typically just in the district. So at the end of the fiscal year, we ended the fiscal year about $158,000 expenditures exceeding revenues. A lot of that was in the beginning of the fiscal year before we got in to implement the plan. We did pay almost half of the revolving line of credit balance down by the end of the fiscal year, and part of the plan was that the county would support the operations of the district as necessary, and so you could see we had a loan balance owed back to Mojave County at $276,000. Our current financial status right now, the revolving line of credit balance, which was at $437,000, is completely retired. Our lease purchase obligations are completely eliminated. We've sold off all the equipment that was involved with those leases, and actually, we had surplus, we got more than we owed for that, and so we brought some money back into the district that's helped us reduce our debt. All outstanding payroll and vendor obligations have been met, which was $146,000 as of February 6, and you can see that our loan balance, which was fairly high, in fact, it had been up to $356,000, if I'm not mistaken, I'm just trying to do that hipshot, that, is now down to $146,000 as of last Friday. We do anticipate that that loan balance that we owe to Mojave County will be down in the low double-digit to single-digit figure by the time we end up June 30. In fact, I think when we projected it on Friday, we were looking at about $9,000 to $12,000, depending upon how taxes go, so that would be all that we would owe. Starting July 1, though, we'll either need to continue to register warrants, which will bring that loan balance back up, and/or we'll need to be back on the revolving line of credit with Wells Fargo, and we can talk about how we want to do that. We're happy to continue to register warrants with the county, if that's acceptable to you. I know that in speaking with the county treasurer, when we register warrants for a loan balance, the county makes more money than they get on investing the money otherwise, and so we're happy to do that as well. Here's just a graph of the loan balance projections. We project that probably a majority of all the funds going into fiscal 2015 will be paid in the first half of taxes, because we'll pick up July, August, and September, just like all taxing jurisdictions do. We'll have to, we won't have money coming in, and we'll have to expend the funds, so it'll either be on our loan balance of registered warrants or revolving line of credit, but by the time first half taxes come in, we'll be completely back in the black. So fiscal '14 budget's at $1.2 million, that's our current budget, $741,000 in property tax levy. We did a tax rate override this fiscal year. The legislature passed some session law that allowed for special taxing districts, fire districts specifically, to override their tax rate based upon the recession. We took advantage of that in the last fiscal year to try and help reduce our, or eliminate the financial insolvency. We're still anticipating $126,000 in tax delinquencies this fiscal year. We allocated $477,000 to debt reduction, and so you can see the outcome of that before when I told you that we had eliminated almost all the debt, and we were down to only owing the county about $146,000. Our operating costs, $63,000 a month, give or take. Some months are much lower, some months are higher, depending upon what expenditures we have. Some are lumped, some like insurance tends to spike that. Here's a budgetary comparison. You can see that FY '13, '14 revenue basically remains about the same. On that top, that non-tax revenue is our ambulance revenue, and so in '13, it was overstated, and so we've reduced that down to what we think is a sustainable amount. And then in '13 and '14, in the expenditures, you can see that in '13, there was a significant amount of expenditures was for personnel, and we've eliminated that and moved a lot of that expenditure to debt service, and that was the outcome that you saw that I spoke about earlier. Please, I'm just going to drone on here, so ask questions as we go, if you have any. Fiscal year 2015, coming into July 1, we're proposing a $1.1 million budget. We'll have $675,000 in tax levy revenue. We're back to the 3 1/4 tax rate cap, projecting $108,000 in tax delinquencies. Total expenses at $743,000. We've allocated $115,618 to pay down the Mojave County loan. While the balance right now is $146,000, some of that will go away, and that's what we believe that we'll owe going into that next fiscal year, either to the county on registered warrants or to Wells Fargo, our revolving line of credit. $104,808 allocated to financial reserves in that fiscal year, and hopefully we'll see some financial reserves built up. Two-year projections, projecting tax revenues as flat, $675,253. Non-tax revenues is almost exclusively our ambulance services that we operate in Dolan Springs and Meadview, and then out on Highway 93. Total revenue, $1.1 million. Operational expenses are $905, and then contingency capital allocations, $212. Some of that here in FY '15 is the elimination of what was left of the debt, and we'll talk about, a little bit about operations and service delivery. I'll turn it over to Chief Moore, who takes care of that for us.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. Our current operation is still unchanged. Our goal is to run three firefighters per day in that community of Dolan Springs and Meadview. As we've moved forward, we've transitioned us over into the 911 dispatch center here through the City of Kingman with the NICFD and the Golden Valley Fire District, and as well as we've made some changes with the base hospital, try to streamline the service and cut the costs. As we project down the road, I don't see a great change in our staffing levels, because financially, we're operating at the level we really need to be operating at. Call volume and population are kind of the two things we've looked at, and as we move forward, we see that staffing level staying about the same. Any questions on the operational side?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, I think that was, I think that was it, and I'm happy to, and Chief Moore, we're happy to stand for any questions that the board might have.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to say thank you for such a stellar job in putting this back together again and continuing to offer service to those folks out there. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Chair, Mr. Watson, thank you.
Supervisor Moss? Supervisor Johnson? Is he still on?
No questions, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have National Center for State Courts' report on design feasibility study for the proposed Mojave County Courthouse.
Good morning. May it please the Chairman, honorable board members, administration, and council. In a moment, I will turn the podium over to our court administrator, Kip Anderson, who will present a slideshow establishing some of the poignant reasons for a new courthouse. He will then also introduce our guests from the National Center for State Courts. The National Center for State Courts is retained by the court as a result of obtaining a grant from the State Justice Institute to not only generate the report but also a design concept for the court. And that report and the design concept was included within the board packet. As the board is aware, 15 years ago, when it passed the quarter cent sales tax, the number-one reason and priority for that sales tax was a new courthouse. Here we are 15 years later, and that priority remains. In addition, I think that if you ask administration, what is the one existing county building that based upon lack of functionality and obsolescence that needs to be replaced, it would be the Mojave County Courthouse. So with those opening remarks, I'll turn the microphone and the podium over to Mr. Anderson to go through the slideshow. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Angus, and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity. We will try to keep it moving, Chairman. We did want to just show you a few slides, not to turn anybody's stomach this morning after the positive things, but we wanted to show you a few slides of our Mojave County courthouse. It's a beautiful building. There's a few of us that have wonderful offices, but there's quite a few that work in some tough positions. So, just a few pictures here. These are some pictures, and I think our clerk of the court is in the audience today too, Verlin. These are some pictures of her windows looking into her office area. You can see that not a lot of light gets through those windows. We're actually working with Public Works to hopefully make some changes there in the coming year, but the courthouse has a lot of things that need to be improved. Here's a picture of one of our courtroom clerk offices. Did we lose it? Can you see it on your monitors? It's up on mine. There we go. You can see that we've pushed, we've put people into what used to be closets, any type of available space, we're making use of it. Here's the main hallway in the clerk's area. You can see it's very narrow. We have to use it for putting up our copy machines. You can see that there's pipes and things running above them, and it's one of their main work areas. Here's in their financial work area, and obviously, if you look up and you see the pipes, water pipes, sewer pipes, and we've jammed in several, I shouldn't say jammed in, we've strategically placed many of several employees into these work areas, and over the years, we've tried to do the best we can to improve them, and I know Verlin is concerned about this, we're concerned about it, we've met with Public Works, we've done the best we can. But again, a lot of wires, a lot of heating and air I don't want to belabor the point, but another closet area that's been converted into a workstation. You can get a close look at, if the toilets flush too long, it gets a little noisy at that workstation. I don't know if Judge Gerler wanted to make a point about this. This is an area that through that wood, well, Judge, you want to, I know you wanted to say something.
This is one of our main security concerns. You can see the plywood over the hole into the courthouse. We had a homeless individual that had climbed the fence near the air conditioning units and had obtained access to the courthouse and was living in the courthouse. The court employees referred to the individual as Mike. We found some of his personal.
Not Mr. Hendricks.
Not Mr. Hendricks, though. Just generically referred to this homeless individual as Mike, and we found some of his personal effects in the courthouse, and that was the reason for the plywood board over the hole into the court.
All right. Let me just finish up, but just a couple of other stuff. I did want to just show you a couple of our courtrooms as well. As you know, these courtrooms were converted. This used to be the county building, so there were county offices in there. We've got support pillars that are obstructing the view in some of our courtrooms, which is, you know, just not a good way to conduct justice. Supervisor Moss, I don't know if you, I'm sure you've been in a couple of these courtrooms, and I don't know if they're handy to hide behind or not, but it certainly makes it hard for the jurors and the judges to conduct business.
This is Judge Jansen's courtroom, and as a result of a criminal jury trial that was in that courtroom, we did have a Court of Appeals case, that the issue was the actual courtroom and its operation. And the reason for the issue is that counsel could not see the jurors as the jurors were reacting to questions and answers of the witnesses. And fortunately, the Court of Appeals decided against that particular issue, and if it had not, we would not have been able to utilize that courtroom for jury trials.
And then just to finish up, this is one of the restrooms in the juror, off of one of our jury rooms, very, very, very small. And then quick this slide, unfortunately, sometimes this is the way we can have to bring in some of the in-custodies. We've been working with the sheriff to try to streamline that, but again, not a very secure setup. And then this is Judge Weiss's courtroom up on the third floor. Again, another pillar, or no, that's the same shot of Judge Jansen, sorry. And then we've got some of these unfortunate steps coming out of restrooms and some things that aren't set up very well. So just, those are just a few of the concerns. We hope that with the National Center presentation and some of the information, and I know you've had an opportunity to look at it, but I want to introduce Chang Ming and Nathan Hall from the National Center. They've, Chang Ming worked on our two thousand and six, two thousand and seven study as well. I want to turn it over to them and let them share a few thoughts on their presentation, some of the material they put together. Thank you for your time.
Good morning, chairman and a member of the board. My name is Chang Ming Ye. I'm very happy to be here again. As Kip just mentioned, I was here in two thousand and six and two thousand and seven doing the study, and so this is the time we did something different than the last time. So we just want to briefly highlight the changes and the recommendation as this around the feasibility study. And first of all, I guess everybody loved the old building, a historic courthouse from outside, looks marvelous, but once you get in, you find out there's some very strange and ironic awkward situation, as Kip just highlights on this interior difficulty we have. And as a planner, we look at this issue, and he pretty much highlight most typical old core building face, that mean functionality inadequate of space and also security. And all of those issues are facing us today, and that's what National Center have been charged to look at the feasibility to make a new courthouse structure with certain restriction on the size and the cost for doing that, see whether we can develop some concept that can fit in some given budget, okay, for the construction. And so this time, it's a little bit different, and not just the scope, but also the cost. We want to make sure with a given cost target, we can meet the basic requirement of the court. And so this is the objective that we're trying to address in this project. As you can see that, and this concept is to address sound occupant, courthouse occupant, which is a little bit shrunk from the last time. This is to address the courtroom issue, functionality, and we want to address the, what's the modern courthouse and what's the modern courtroom should be? What's a typical night safety issue need to be addressed in the new building? And with that, we develop a fairly sophisticated space program which identify all the functional area required based on the proposed occupancy. In summary, generally, this building tried to accommodate the following space, major space. We plan to have seven superior court courtroom, okay, with additional chamber, eight chamber, because understanding there are judges coming from the satellite facility into Kingman, so we provide some additional office space for them while they come to work in the court. And also, we try to address the issue of the two JP court in Kingman area. And so we identify the occupancy, the number of people working in those courts and offices. And we also look at the future requirement for the growth for the clerk of court and identify what's the space. And summary, if we are going to build the building today, okay, with seven superior courtroom in the three-story structure, the square footage estimate is almost like seventy-four thousand square feet. If we add two additional JP court and the clerks of the JP court office, we're looking at a total square footage close to eighty-nine thousand square feet. With that, and some of the space issue in the concept we are going to introduce to you later, pretty much address most of modern courthouse design requirement, which corrects on the issue and problem that Kip just showed you in the picture, okay? We want the functionality issue. We want to address the efficiency of how the operation should be when you locate proper space next to each other and connect them with proper circulation. And then we want to address the security requirement. With that, this is some of the general concept we used in the development of the new building stacking diagram. In general, you can see that the building is floor plan, this is a typical courtroom plan, with the blue area highlighted as interface area where the public and court and judicial officer meet. That's where the courtroom is located. Above that, there's a green area, this is a public area, not for public circulation, but also we are going to provide attorney-client conference space, so attorney can talk to their client in private rather than doing in public. That's one of the major area we try to address individuals' privacy and the matter, confidential matter they mitigate. The third one would be the lower area, you see the pink area, we identify as the employee area, and that's where Judge Chambers supports staff. They will work, and they will move about in those area. That's a typical concept which is quite different than what you have today. And after this, I want our staff architect, Nathan Hall, to introduce you how we analyze the site situation and how do we place the structure.
Thank you, and good morning. Just a little brief summary of what we have done and what our assumptions are on this project was to utilize the same site that was indicated in the two thousand and seven master plan. The proposed site is to the west, northwest of the existing county administration building here, and it would be a concept that could accommodate, we feel, about one hundred and fifty to two hundred public parking spaces and an additional forty or fifty secure staff and judges parking spaces. Those numbers assume that that annexed building would go away. Developing the adjacency, we had to consider both the square footage requirements that we developed, as Chang Ming explained, we also had to consider what site options we have available. We also considered some of the precedents and trends in modern courthouse design and planning. So we developed this sort of L-shaped concept, and it's not a detailed design, it's more of a space allocation concept, but it tries to capture some of these zoning and adjacency concepts. We have a main entry facing Beale Street where people would enter through a secure screening area. At that point, on the bottom right, you can see is where a JP court public service interface would happen. On the bottom left, you would see the clerk of the court. Up on the top left in the tan portion, we've included a jury assembly. And then you can see in this blocking and stacking area, we have in the back of the house, some of that red area, which is where we would have a Sallyport and secure in custody accommodations. And you can see the secure circulation areas on the back of the house in the kind of grayish blue color. On the second floors is where we begin some of the courthouse and adjudication spaces. As you can see, what we have is the central, two bigger, larger courtrooms in the central part of the courthouse, and those are serviced by the secure elevator for in-custody travel, directly adjacent to the courtrooms, court floor holding accommodations. On the upper top, I guess northern portion, we have three non-criminal hearing rooms and civil trial courtrooms. And then on the bottom right, we have the two justice of the peace courtrooms. If you'll notice, these are all connected via a restricted circulation corridor. On the bottom left, we have facilities for judges' chambers and jury deliberation that are accessed via a secure point to the public hallway, but yet share a secure common corridor. And then on the third floor, just briefly, we have two more criminal-equipped courtrooms. We have space for mediation, court administration, court services. We also see a dashed area on the bottom right, which shows the potential for two additional courtrooms that could be built if they were planned correctly on a flat roof for additional growth. And I want to explain what the potentials are on this next slide because we do know that we're facing a budget limit of what might be feasible for the county to entertain. At the same time, we know that the court adds approximately five, one judge every five to six years. So on this blocking-massing concept, you can see Beale Street, you can see the sheriff office, you can see the existing parking lot. On diagram number one, that shows the superior court only concept. Diagram two shows a concept with a superior court and the two justice of the peace courts and related support space. And then on the diagram labeled number three, we show in that blue sort of color the future expansion potential, and that includes another set of courtrooms above the justice of the peace courts that could potentially be planned for two stories. We have a potential for expansion above the criminal-equipped courtrooms on the middle section of the building, and then we have diagrammed the potential for expansion on the northern part of the building to expand clerk offices and the civilian hearing rooms on that section of the building. And these are not final design concepts, but from a functional adjacency and blocking and site utilization scheme, we think it's important that the county keep in mind the future potential, even in the reality of building a smaller building today. This just briefly summarizes our opinion of cost. If the superior court were built, only the superior court, it's in the range of eighteen and a half to twenty-one million, we believe. The superior court and the additional justice of the peace courts likely cost range of twenty-two to twenty-five million.
I guess the concept, to cap the concept, you look at the price range and look at the site, and also look at, the most critical part of that is the gross provision. This concept show, with the dishing on the top of the JP court portion, and also with the dishing to the site, toward Beale Street, and we see a hundred percent gross capacity building in this concept, and today we have seven courtroom, which mean a hundred percent, that means fourteen superior court courtroom plus a two JP court courtroom. That's the concept we have, and we look at this type of structure with this three-story main structure with a two-story addition for the JP court, and this type of construction probably, construction period probably two to three years time.
Okay.
Any questions or?
I would make a comment with the indulgence of the chairman. Based upon my personal experience, the courthouse, the new courthouse, is desperately needed. I don't hide behind the pillar. The pillar blocks me, and it's very difficult for an attorney to do his job when he can't see the judge or the jury half the time. But it's, and that gets beyond just the safety and health and what I think is some fire hazards existing in the current courthouse. So thank you for your presentation.
My apologies on that missed comment there, Supervisor. And I would just add that, you know, we did, as we were going through this process, we did meet with County Administrator Hendricks and John Timko as well, and tried to keep them informed in what we were doing, and we appreciated their support, and we certainly appreciate the support of the board. Just one note, a reminder, next Monday, if you'd like, if you can, please come to our dedication in Lake Havasu as well. We look forward to that event. Thank you.
And Kim, I took it for the humor it was intended. There's been many times I've wanted to hide behind that pillar.
Thank you. You know, I know the history of this goes back a long way, and I'll have to come up to par with it. You know, you say that it was the top priority, but all these other buildings got built, and you're still here giving this presentation, so there's a lot of things I need to get up to speed on. And just because we talk about abandoned buildings, what would happen to the existing courthouse?
That's a very good question. I, you know, I think that one thought, or one time there was a thought that maybe the city would like to move their facility in there, but I don't know how feasible that would be for them, and then what kind of financial arrangements they'd make with the county, but that's a good point. It is a historical building. It's coming up on its hundred years. It started operation in nineteen fifteen, so yeah, you can't tear it down, and I'm not sure you could auction it off either. So good question, Supervisor.
And everything's been looked into about, there's just no way you can rehab that building?
Well, again, being it historical, it'd be very difficult to do any kind of, to do too much interior, and then the size just isn't there, and then to be able to make the security and the circulation patterns that we need, it would be very difficult, so.
So where are we on this whole process? I mean, this presentation and what about funding?
Madam Chairman, if it pleases the board, I could ask John Timko, our financial director, to come down here and discuss funding.
I mean, are we at that place now that we're talking about today, or is that, was this just a presentation for this? I mean, I don't want to.
He could explain, Mr. Timko, Madam Chairman, could explain that, about how long we're going to be continuing to collect the quarter cent sales tax and the sunset clause. He can also tell expected revenues that we're going to be receiving from that. There's been some discussion on alternate revenues. With our current financial conditions, it doesn't look like we're going to be underspending our general. doesn't look like we're going to be underspending our general fund revenues and, at least this year, and be able to contribute to the building fund. But if we may, and please the board, I'd like for John Timko to address it.
Yeah, just if you can quickly just give a real little bit of the history of, of the...
Madam Chairman, members of the board, the quarter cent sales tax has been a primary engine for funding the capital expansion in the county over the past ten, ten years. It expires at the end of calendar 2019. And at this point, it's generating five to six million dollars a year in revenue. Those revenues have been utilized to build this building that we're in and to, to cooperate in financing the, the new jail facility. At current, the jail facility is consuming a hundred percent of the revenues generated by the, the sales tax fund. They are actually a couple of million dollars lower per year now than they were when we financed the jail due to the economy. Looking forward with those funds sunsetting, it's very difficult to do a financing with a revenue stream that would only have approximately three years of run room to do a twenty-year financing. And so, at this point, the, the concept is that we could fund this approximately the end of fiscal nineteen, we would have, be able to accumulate enough money for the lower end cost projections, the eighteen to twenty-one million could be generated in that timeframe. There are other options available. The, quite frankly, the easiest and probably the most beneficial long run to the county would be to extend the quarter cent sales tax or simply to remove the sunset of the quarter cent sales tax so that we would have an ongoing building and building maintenance fund to support the infrastructure of the county. If that were done, we could finance the building pretty quickly and get started probably within, within a year. Other things that have been suggested, and we're starting to explore via public-private partnerships, where a, a third party would come in and either assist or fully fund the construction and, in essence, work, work in a lease basis with us until we repay their, their investment. Again, the repayment is the, is the critical part there, and without a dedicated source of funds, that's going to be presenting some problems as well. So, the, the best, the best that I could recommend as far as going forward, to begin as soon as possible on this construction, would be simply removing the sunset of the quarter cent sales tax, which would allow that as a source of funding into the future, which we could utilize to help us finance this project.
I want to ask something. When you put in the quarter cent sales tax, you knew this day would come, that it would sunset. What, when you put it in, what was the plan? You know, people say, once government puts in a tax, no matter what they say, it never goes away. And I'm one of the people who say that. So, I just want to hear the thinking behind, when this started, did you really believe that it was going to be sunsetted, or, or did you believe that you'd be standing here one day? I mean, did something dramatically change?
Madam Chairman, if I could, I was not employed by the county at the time that that tax was, was passed. And I think probably Mike and Bill and Supervisor Johnson were probably the only three that remain that were actively involved in that. However, I do know that it was based on a very comprehensive study of all the buildings in the county. We, we looked at space needs, growth needs. At that time, there was quite a bit of discussion about having all the counties relocate someplace in the Golden Valley. And, and so they prioritized the buildings. Need overcame those, those priorities. And I think they, in fact, did think that, that that would be sufficient to build all the buildings that were in their plan, and so that it would be able to sunset. And the fact that, you know, building inflation ate up all the funds before we got to the end of the list is probably where we're sitting today.
Okay. If we decide not to sunset it, tell me again how this would go down?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to add a little bit about what John had said. One of the things that, and the judge might also, one of the things that wasn't contemplated in that original list was a jail. So, we had a seventy million dollar plus investment that we had to fund. And that actually caused us to modify the plans and not be able to build a court facility. But what the judge had originally mentioned, when the original list was made up, I believe what was contemplated, and I'll probably miss one, but the courthouse, a comprehensive forty-five million dollar courthouse was number one on the list. The sheriff's office was, contemplated this administrative building was contemplated. Planning and zoning and development services was, and public works was contemplated. But, and nowhere in that original proposal for the quarter cent sales tax was a jail contemplated.
Chairman Angus, the Board's Resolution Number ninety-nine dash one four eight, which was recorded with the official records of Mojave County on August twenty-four of nineteen ninety-nine, set forth the priority of projects and the estimated cost. The number one project was a Law and Justice Center at thirty-four thou, thirty-four million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you can see from the presentation, we've reduced down the scope and looking at approximately eighteen to twenty million. The next item was a general government building at fifteen million, then a Health and Human Services Center for five million, then a public works, planning and zoning building for four million two hundred and fifty thousand, and then sheriff's substations at two million five hundred. So, County Administrator Hendricks is correct, the jail was not included within that, within the five priorities.
Right. And I just want the public to know that that was mandated, that we do that jail. Right? And that was, we had no choice. And that, that's why we're here. That's why you got bumped out. I still don't quite understand why you got bumped out, and we, we have two development services and planning and zoning that came up before you guys. But we'll talk about that another time.
Madam Chairman, I have a brief question, if I may. I'm trying to understand some of the numbers here. Mr. Timko, if I could, if I understand correctly, after we pay off the jail, and that's in two thousand sixteen, is that correct?
It'd be early two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen. And after we pay off the jail, you're anticipating roughly fifteen to eighteen million dollars of revenue generated by the sales tax before it sunsets?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So, if we wanted to do the low end, assuming the worst-case scenario with the sales tax, we'll have us fifteen million bucks, which means we'll have to come up with another three million for the low end. And if we go to the high end, we'll have to come up with another ten million?
Five to six.
Okay. I thought it was twenty-five million for option number three.
You're correct. With the, with the justice court, that would be that, yes.
Okay, yes. So, and knowing that every five to six years, we add a Superior Court judge, and Mojave County population is still growing, I suspect that trend will continue. So, if we went with the low end, just around the time we're starting construction, we'll have to add another judge.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Supervisor Johnson, do you have any questions?
No, but I have a lot of statements to correct some of the erroneous statements that have been made, but I don't think this is the appropriate time to do it. I think if we're going to look at new buildings, that it should be in a capital improvement plan that should be brought to the board, so all buildings need to be replaced, should be addressed at one time and put into a budget.
I would like to state, I really, I fully support, and I'm very proud of the presentation that was given, or honored by the presentation that was given by the courts and by the National Center for State Courts. This is a public need. It's something that needs to be done. And I don't think it's a problem that we should go and try to do it on the cheap, because all we're doing is leaving another problem for our predecessors, five, six, seven years down the road. I think it's a problem we should try to solve for the long term. However, we manage to get it solved.
Okay. Any other comments? Statements? Questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's time for the consent agenda. Number five, the consent agenda, items five through thirty-nine will be considered, we have thirty-nine, right, will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion minus any items pulled for discussion. Any items?
I'd like to pull item twenty-three, as I have a potential conflict.
Okay.
I have none.
Supervisor Johnson?
Done.
Okay. Motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda, items five through thirty-nine, except for item twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Item twenty-three, approve a multiple award of contract number fourteen dash B dash zero-two, hot mix and cold mix to McCormick Construction Company, Bullet City, Arizona, Campbell Ready Mix, Lake Havasu City, Arizona, and Desert Construction, Kingman, Arizona, on an annual as-needed basis, with the sole option of the county to renew the contracts up to four additional one-year periods on behalf of the Public Works Department. Supervisor Moss?
I have to abstain from discussion on this particular item, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty-three.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Motion carried?
And Peggy, I didn't vote.
And, and you abstained?
I abstained.
Okay. Off to the regular agenda. Number forty, discussion and possible action. Approve transferring the fiscal year two thousand fourteen user fee revenues in the amount of thirty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and unallowable salary benefits and travel expenses in the amount of fifty-five thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents from the Recorder's Surcharge Fund, which is two zero one one two eight zero zero, to the General Fund Recorder's Organization one zero zero one two eight zero zero, and authorize a transfer of one hundred thousand seven hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-two cents from the General Fund contingency to process a General Fund transfer to the Recorder's Surcharge Fund to cover unallowable expense in fiscal year two thousand thirteen. And this was continued from our meeting of April seventh. Okay.
What's your discussion, Madam Chair?
Okay. We don't need, do we need a motion to discuss this?
No.
Oh, no. Okay. Carol Meyer, she's our recorder. I know she wants to speak with this, to this.
Chairwoman, supervisors, I'm not that tall. For the record, I think it is important that the facts concerning agenda item number forty be explained to you. The legislature passed ARS eleven four seventy-five many years ago. The statute created the Recorder's Surcharge Fund, which was divided, which was designed to provide a funding source addressing the high cost of the county recorder's software system. In Mojave County, the funding source is a one-time four-dollar charge paid upon the certain recardations. The statute is very specific as to what the monies can be spent for. The statute states, and I quote, "Monies in this fund may only be used for purchasing hardware, software, training employees to operate the system, maintaining the system, purchasing equipment, maintenance agreements, and updating the system hardware or software for the county recorder's office. Monies shall not be expended for expenses other than for the support of the county recorder's automated system. If inconsistency with this section, the general fund shall reimburse the document, storage, retrieval, conversion, and maintenance fund for all improper and inconsistent expenditures." The last sentence in the statute is why we are here today. The Auditor General is charged with auditing the fund and directing the Mojave County Board of Supervisors to replenish the fund and make it whole for improper expenditures. This last February, the Auditor General completed an audit of the expenditures from our fund and published a report identifying inappropriate expenditures for salaries and travel. Since two thousand and nine, I made the county aware that this was a big concern of mine, and through attrition, did not hire vacated positions to ensure that we could move towards rectifying this situation. Each year, I have asked to have personnel funded outside of this fund, but continually, my pleas were rejected. It is unfortunate that it took an audit to bring to light this problem and validate my concerns. The painful result is that the board will now have to dip into the general fund to make the recorder's fund whole. Item forty, oh, excuse me. I give notice that this may not be over yet. The Auditor General wants to reach back and identify past years' inappropriate expenditures and the board, and for the board to make the fund whole for each year. Item forty only addresses two thousand thirteen. We charge a small, let's see. Okay. I would also like to take the opportunity to seek your support concerning the distribution of the recorder's fees to replenish fund expenditures. We charge a small fee to commercial users for access to our online system, as well as to companies that receive an FTP site upload on a weekly basis. After an analysis by OMB, these fees were revised in two thousand eleven and in two thousand twelve, which the board approved. By statute, we cannot make a profit, but can recoup some of the costs to operate. In the past, this money has always been returned to the surcharge fund to help offset the enormous cost of the system, as revenue fees, as revenues from funds to help offset this enormous cost for the system. As revenue from fees have decreased, I took it upon myself to promote the system and have significantly increased our revenues from fees in order to offset the cost of maintaining equipment and purchasing equipment that the four-dollar portion of the recording fee has not been able to cover. I do not support the recent change whereby these fees are now directed to the general fund and not to the recorder's fund. These fees are being generated to offset the cost to maintain the recorder's system and should not go to the general fund. I have been threatened that I will suffer more recorder personnel reductions than I, than the seven I have already lost, if I do not nod to the diversion of these loss in the funds. I request the board direct these funds to be left in the surcharge account for their intended purpose and that my staffing levels not be threatened, because I am trying to do the right thing. Thank you. Questions?
Yes. Yeah, go ahead.
For the edification of the public who may be listening to this, Carol, can you define or give us a layman's definition of what the user fees, the user fee is used for? I think it was mentioned during the speech or to the presentation, but I want to clarify both these two fees.
Okay. The user fees that we are collecting is for the website and for the FTP site. These, all the expenses come out of the surcharge. That is the leases on the computers, that is the maintenance on the computers, and that is the recorder's system.
And that's the user fee?
That's...
What about the surcharge fund?
The surcharge, well, that is what...
There's one, there's one and the same?
Yes.
Okay. So, what are those to be used for? Is this to maintain your automated computer system?
Right. Well, the recorder system alone is over, it depends, it's seventy to eighty thousand. It goes up five percent a year. And that's for the system itself. Then we've got the leases on the computers, and we've got the maintenance on the computers, and any of the additional equipment that we have there. We have a lot of different equipment. We have a lab and everything, so.
Okay. Thank you, Carol. I appreciate that.
Okay. Could John Timko come up and, and tell that side of it? It seems to me, I mean, if this is something that is set by statute, it's black and white. And I'm still not clear as to what that is.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'd just preface my remarks by saying that I've been with the county since two thousand and two. This fund predated my arrival. And in the entire time that I've been here, employees and travel have been paid from that fund. We've been audited each of those years, and no audit exceptions until this year have ever been mentioned. I agree with, with the recorder that she has requested that we transition people out of that fund that she thought were inappropriately charged. And we had, in fact, been doing that. We're down to one, where when I started, I think we had four. Given, excuse me, difficulties in the general fund budget in the past few years, we have not been able to fully transfer all the people off that fund. But in last year's budget, we did move everybody except the final employee who was planned to have been moved this year. As, as regards the fees that are at issue, the statute very clearly states that this fund is created and consists of monies received pursuant to subsection C. Subsection C is the four-dollar special recording surcharge fee. I would point out that prior recorders had taken the interpretation as to the use of the fees... the fees where it included the phrase "maintenance" of the system to include people who are required to maintain the system by inputting documents into the system and doing those kind of activities. And so, while we had a liberal interpretation, which was agreed to by prior auditors, the Auditor General takes a more narrow approach to what system maintenance is, and so, we have negotiated with them that we will refund from the general fund to the recorder's fee fund this hundred-and-some-thousand net of extraneous revenues and unallowed costs. That's the $100,000 transfer. And we have, so far this year, encountered additional expenses which we will transfer from the general fund back into the recorder's fee fund. So, the issue here is one of a misinterpretation from prior recorders predating me, saying that it was okay to charge employees and travel there to a new interpretation of the auditors, which that is not, and we're rectifying that and making it whole.
Okay, so, Carol Meyer, so you're against this, so you want the fee to stay in the recorder's office? I'm just, it seems to me, do we need a legal opinion on this? Because if you're saying that's the interpretation, you're saying that's the interpretation.
Madam Chairman, if I might, there are two different fees at issue here. We have no problem leaving the $4 recorder's fee going into this fund as it is required by the statute.
Okay.
The statute, though, says that the fund consists of monies pursuant to section C, which is only this $4 fee. The additional monies, and I congratulate the recorder for generating additional revenues that she's generating through selling these services to various individuals, is essentially a general fund activity and is not subject to the restrictions that are placed on the funds that go into this fee fund. And so, our recommendation, along with the Auditor General's, is that we're not putting the expenses in, into the fund with a very narrow interpretation of what maintenance is. We shouldn't be putting extra funds in there that are subject to these restrictions when they're being generated by general fund-funded activity.
Is there something you want to say?
The general fund does not pay for any of the expenses that is, occurred with this, the website and the FTP site. If anything, it would be 1% or 2% of employees' salaries, but it would be very minor because everything we have automated, we even have a billing quarterly that is automated. It goes through email. The FTP site is uploaded, and those that pay for the service push a button and it's downloaded, they download it from home or wherever they are. But, you know, this fund, I think, should stay where the expenses are being taken out of, but.
Is this something we just need a legal opinion on?
Madam Chairman, I've discussed this with Mr. Timko and do concur with his conclusion that a strict reading of the language would allow the money to be transferred to the general fund. Obviously, if the Board wanted to recommend that it not be, not happen that way and be put into the recorder's account, you could do that. Madam Chair, as I understand it, there's one source of fees which are required to remain with the recorder, and there's another source of fees which the recorder has used her initiative and her desire to improve the operations of her office to generate via services she provides to the public, and that's a discretionary transfer. And it occurs to me that if we go to our elected officials and we sweep funds that they used to do a novel or a new approach in order to improve the efficiencies of their office, what we're going to be doing is deterring any sort of initiative. Why would they bother, is what it would come down to. And it is my view that we should table this issue for the next meeting and direct the county administrator to come back with a new proposal which does not result in any funds being transferred or moved out of the recorder's office. I would try to interpret this and move numbers in and out and do a motion right now, but the odds are high I would mess it up.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think we, I want to table this as well.
Madam Chairman, I think that's a, that's a perfect solution to this. I would like to add one thing. You know, it appears that logically, this fund is like a building fund or a planning and zoning permit fund, and those funds get remitted to the general fund, and then they're reallocated during the budget process. So, I believe, you know, to say that elected official can keep a fund that's not statutorily under their complete authority, I think that fund should be under the Board's authority during the budget process and should be reallocated accordingly. That's, that's off the cuff. Thank you.
And if I could, in, before I make my motion, I just want to say what I think, what I was trying to say a little earlier, it's very poor public policy for Board of Supervisors to create the example that elected officials who use the power and authority and initiative of their office to generate revenues don't get the benefit of that, because we'll never see it again. It's like saying, oh, great, you've earned a profit, we're taking it. I mean, why would you bother even trying to earn a profit? So, I really do believe, whether it's under our authority or not, when it comes to this remainder, because we're talking this current budget year that this motion is fixing, am I understanding that correctly? Mike?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So, when it comes to the next budget year, we can discuss it when we get into those discussions. It would be my preference that those monies be left with the recorder as part of our discretionary authority. But in dealing with this issue, number 40, I would like to make a motion that we table item 40 to our next meeting, that it come back to us, craft in such a format that the transfer from the general fund into the recorder's office to take into account some improper expenditures be corrected, but that no monies be removed from the funds generated by the recorder's office, and put together a proper motion in that format for the next meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion for table.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Discussion, Madam Chair.
Okay.
The discussion I would have is, be my request, to give them 30 days back, that two weeks, pretty, pretty quick turnaround for everybody to get their information together.
Ms. Meyer is okay with it, I have no problem amending my motion for a 30-day period.
Very good.
Second amended.
Okay, we've got a motion amended and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, number 41 has been pulled. Onto 42, discussion impossible action, acknowledged receipt and set for public hearing on May 5, 2014, to consider a bingo license application for Golden Shore Civic Association, 13136 Golden Shores Parkway, Golden Shores, Arizona, to be held on Tuesdays at 1:00 P.M.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item 42.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Onto number 43, discussion impossible action, direct staff to hold a new public auction to sell real property known as Arnold Plaza, located 301 and 303 Oak Street, Kingman, Arizona, further identified as APN 303-08-151 and -153, in accordance with ARS 11-251.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve item 43 of the agenda.
Second the motion.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next up, I have, that was the item I put on, but I am pulling that item. So, if there's no other things to discuss, anything else, then I believe we are adjourned. Thank you.